All right, we will try it now.
Test.
Do you hear it? Okay.
Good evening. Welcome. Today's date is January 8, 2024. It's 5:30 PM Monday, and we are assembled at the Council Chambers for City Hall. And we are now called to order for the regular city council meeting. Those who are able, please join us in the pledge.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Hoop.
Here.
Kel.
Here.
Wadihoff.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Very good. It's time for public comment, and I have to read this proviso. Members of the public may make comments on any item that's not on the agenda at this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes unless longer is authorized by me. Speak directly to the mayor and councils as a whole, and the mayor and councilors are not to engage in discussion or debate on those items raised by members of the public at this time, and are actually to be taking on those items in order that we can comply with the open meetings laws. It is now time for mayor, council, and administrative comments. Does anyone on the council? I'm sorry. Oh, I did that again, didn't I? I swear. He asked if I remembered how to do this, since I missed the two meetings in December, and we know the answer now. Hi, Deb.
Hi there.
Come on up for public comment.
Can we do public comment now? Okay.
Yeah. It'll be fast, though, because I may, you know, try to...
I will do my best to be fast. I didn't plan on coming tonight and speaking, so I don't have any notes in front of me, so let me apologize in advance if I forget something. Deb Milliser, I'm the director of the Marshalltown Central Business District here in Marshalltown, of course, and I wanted to talk about the ice rink that is uptown. I don't know if anybody has seen the MCBD's social media page, but nearly 1,000 reactions, 100 and some shares, all of these comments, and I share that with you because it's evidence of how excited the community is to have the ice rink in downtown Marshalltown. So I wanted... Do you think it'd be bigger helmet, Gary?
Smaller head.
So I wanted to thank everybody that is involved in the ice rink and to talk a little bit about it. First, I'd like to thank the city of Marshalltown, because that lot is owned by the city of Marshalltown, and without your approval, to have it on that lot, we would not be able to have it there. And I'd like to thank everybody behind the scenes that really pushed for it to be in downtown Marshalltown, and I'd like to thank Park and Rec, because I know that with the rental of the skates, that's another element to Jeff's already limited staff, the skates. Since we've got Vanna Gary/Vanna here, not still in Jeff's thunder.
He went down, though.
He went down, okay.
He had to go answer the door for some time.
For those who would... One of the biggest questions that I hear on social media, or I've been asked, is if you don't have skates, which you can do, you can rent the skates from Park and Rec for $2 a day, and you can get the helmet for free, so Gary might want to just rent the helmet. And pre-plan, because Park and Rec closes at 4:30, so if you're going to use it in the evening, you'll need to rent them out earlier, and I believe you just have to leave a credit card on file to be able to rent the skates. So, Gary/Vanna. Okay. So I wanted to talk about, a little bit more about the ice rink, of how excited I am about this ice rink, not only because it's in downtown Marshalltown, but because it is an example of what this community can do when they get behind something, and they can pull something off really big, and a lot of things have been done in kind. So Marshalltown Company has been a leader with Iowa Wild, bringing the ice rink to downtown Marshalltown, and, you know, which is absolutely fabulous. It's going to bring some foot traffic to the downtown. We've needed something big in downtown for a while. We've been fighting apathy for a while. But I also want to call out all of those organizations that made that land the way it is. So I believe it was Ricken Tiling, Ziegler Equipment, and Construct brought in dirt. Did I forget anybody else, Jeff? Okay. Well, the middle of... I'm going to tell you what else has happened since then. All of that is wonderful and great, but since then, we've also had... Alliant Energy has agreed to put in electrical poles, so we can have lighting, so we can skate there in the evening. Another construction company agreed to hang the lighting, free of charge, AK Construction. Brothers Garage donated money for festooned lightings to be put up on that, so that we can skate in the evening. Raycom, and I believe Chief Tupper probably had a little piece of this, too, is putting up a camera, so we're able to monitor the skate rink as well. So those are all wonderful things, and it's evidence of this community being able to come together. What it reminds me of is last spring, I had been at the Chamber banquet, and Mike Miller had spoke of how people had come together and painted the viaduct in 45 minutes, and how people had come together to send... To open the Tremont up on a good note with solid business. They bought gift cards in advance. So for me, this ice skating rink, coming to downtown Marshalltown, having it finalized the week before the holiday stroll, and then all of these businesses, some of them not even located in Marshalltown, coming together and making this for the community. I think it's an absolutely wonderful story, and I hope it's a story that people talk about for years to come, because it is, without a doubt, an example of community and the county of coming together to make something great happen. So I wanted to talk about that. And then I also wanted to mention that on Monday, January 15, from 11 to 1 o'clock is the official ribbon cutting. Some staff at Marshalltown Company and myself and Iowa Wild have been working on the date, and the specifics of the date, some of the things are still rolling, but we're planning on having some food trucks. I believe Crash from Iowa Wild will be there. I'm not sure if there'll be any swag or not, but it would be great if everybody here and people in your sphere of influence, whether it's Emerson Crew walking down, or Marshalltown Company, I know you guys will be there. I would like for as many people as possible to come and celebrate, because not only are we celebrating this ice skating rink, but we're celebrating something cool and awesome that this community did together, and most of it was done in kind. That's just absolutely wonderful. We should all be proud of the community that we're in. So those were the things that I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Deb. The mic's still open, anyone else?
Hello. Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. Woman loses both legs to a dog attack, December 2, 2023, in Fort Dodge. A woman in Iowa is facing a long road to recovery after a brutal attack by three pit bulls that resulted in the loss of both her legs below the knees and the need for facial reconstruction surgery. The incident occurred at the home of Brittany Skoland in Fort Dodge, November 24. Police were dispatched to the scene following a distress call from a neighbor who heard cries for help. Upon arrival, they found her being mauled by the dogs. Despite the officer's attempts to deter the dogs, the animals continued their assault. In desperate move to save her, an officer was compelled to use his firearm, resulting in the death of the three pit bulls. That's too bad. Her injuries were severe. She was initially transported to Unity Point Trinity Medical Center, but the extent of her injuries necessitated an emergency airlift. her injuries necessitated an emergency airlift to Des Moines for treatment at the Iowa Methodist Medical Center. Her injuries include the loss of both legs and part of her hands, as well as extensive damage to her face. She has had to have both legs amputated to the knees and parts of her hands. She's going to need facial reconstruction surgery, and her head, she has head trauma and much more. The incident is currently under investigation by local law enforcement, but no charges have been filed at this time. Imagine the changes to this woman's life. When you think about all the changes affecting her, it's staggering. First of all, the pains from the amputations, can you imagine that? Take a moment to think about that. Then the damage to her arms and face, bitten on the skull and face, which will need several reconstructive surgeries. That doesn't even address the mental anguish this lady has had thrust upon her. Normal life one minute, and invalid the next. Think of the cost, who's going to pay for all that? Insurance, maybe somebody if she has it, then you and I will be footing the bill, because she's probably going to end up on Medicaid. Think of her everyday activities that you do, from driving your car, going to the store, taking a shower, cooking, everything this lady used to do has changed. The little things we all take for granted has become large obstacles and impossibilities for her. There are no temporary things for this lady. This is her everyday life, every day for the rest of her life. And again, the cost of this is staggering. Here's the kicker, no charges filed. Can you believe that? Why? Because three pit bulls were contained, as the Fort Dodge Dog Ordinance indicates. So therefore, there will be no lawsuit against the gentleman. This is why dog laws need to be detailed and restrictive. I know what you're thinking, yeah, it's too bad, but that'll never happen here. That's what the citizens and this lady from Fort Dodge thought, too. With 41 dog bites in Marshalltown through October of last year, that's one a week. We're one inch of incident away from this being in Marshalltown. Now what?
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Okay, now it is time for comments. Anybody up at the council today who'd like to speak?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Since I'm too old to multitask, I didn't hear, when I was spinning, I didn't hear if Deb said the soft opening is scheduled for Friday, January 8, or no, January, what is that? 11th, for the ice rink. So did you mention that?
I did not.
Okay, okay. So for the public, they can start renting skates, hopefully, on Friday, the 11th, and then Jeff's going to clarify what I just tried to say.
No, Gary's right, there, there will be a soft opening, weather-dependent, ice-dependent, so there will be signs outside, no, this Friday.
Yeah, 12th.
Is it, oh, sorry, the 12th, yeah. Yeah, 12th. Yeah, it, there will be signage up, so you'll know if you can skate or not, and then the formal opening will hopefully be on Monday, that's the plan.
Very good, thank you. Any other council? Joe, is our city mister? Anything?
Just one thing, kind of a reminder to the council and also to the public, next Monday, the 15th, we'll have our, what I call our first budget meeting on talking about budget issues. We'll start at 5 o'clock to make sure we, we get a jump on it. So 5 o'clock next Monday here.
Very good, thanks. Well, I had intended to be talking about the ice rink, too, and I guess since it's now time, not, we're not debating whatever was said earlier, it's time for us to talk, I wanted to thank everybody at the city, too. I know the original thought was to have it someplace else, like Riverside Park, several in the city, especially Jeff Hubbard, who is in charge of the Park and Rec Department, liked the idea of having it downtown, and the space where it is, is where the old Fandals Building was, that was my favorite building, we almost bought it as a law office. It's, it was hurt the most, it looked the worst for years after the tornado, and now we're actually going to have kids there and a sign of life, and that really is pretty cool. I know another comment made on social media is, where will people sit to put their ice skates on? I have trouble at my weight and age putting them on myself, frankly, but it would be nice. I know there's a bleacher company in town, there are probably people that would donate benches. By the way, along the past, there are benches that have been donated, and for a price, you can have a family name or somebody memorialized by doing it that way, so I'm kind of hoping somebody comes forward, and if they don't, I may be talking to my own family to see if we can do that. And then Deb mentioned the, it was called the Brig Bridge Brush Up, was what that was called, one that were about 900 to 1,000 people that came out on a really hot 95-degree day to paint that bridge. Jennifer Howard, who runs the Tremont, was one of the co-chairs of that, my wife Sharon was the other co-chair of that, and that was just one neat day, I was going to say cool day, but that wasn't quite accurate, because it was hotter than places, but it was one time when the town came together. Another time when it happened is when the boys went up to play football in the Uni-Dome in the, in the last game, that entourage that went up to the Uni-Dome in Cedar Falls and came back was, and, and we had like 2/3 of that place occupied, even though the team we were playing was just from Des Moines with a lot more population. So those have been times when this town has stepped up, gotten together, and appreciated what we have and what we can do when we're all pulled together. So I wanted to mention that as well, thank you. Okay, let's go on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve it, that we're going to remove item number three because of a conflict?
I so move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good, and would you read those?
Approve the minutes for the December 22, 2023 meeting, the bill lists an amount of Approve liquor license renewals for Dave's at 207 East Main Street, Marshalltown Arts and Civic Center at 709 South Center Street. Proceed of building and trade permit report for December 2023. Approve October 2023 financial statements. Resolution 2024-001, approving the city fee schedule. Resolution 2024-002, setting a public hearing for the conveyance and transfer of title of city-owned vacant lots. Resolution 2024-003, approving amendment number four to the professional services agreement for the IEDA Downtown Revitalization Grant with RDG Iowa, Inc., in the amount of a $2,520 de-debt.
And very good, let's go to item number three, then, is there a motion to approve it?
Move to approve, your honor.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
That's for the appointment of Gary Thompson as an alternate on the Solid Waste Commission, term ending December 31 of 2026. Thompson, or, let's, let's start with Hoop, sorry. Kel?
Yes.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Abstain due to a conflict?
Thank you, that carried, and thanks, Gary, for pointing that out this morning, I should have recognized that before, too, so I think you'll enjoy that, you can ask Al Hoop, you know, they have a big budget, it's an important position to have there. Thank you. The other thing I forgot to do is to welcome Mark Mitchell up here, this is his first official meeting after having been sworn in, so congratulations on the election, and welcome for the next four years up here, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, on to resolutions, what's our first one?
Resolution 2024-004, accepting bid and purchase of a 2023 Chevrolet 5500 chassis from McGrath Automotive Group.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion, chief.
David Ryerson, Marsh Town Fire Department, so back in November, you gave me permission to reach out with the bid process to see if I could find a chassis for our new rescue truck. I sent out bids to seven different dealerships, of which only two responded back. One of the dealerships, Bob Brown, had bid two separate chassis, however, they were going to have to order them, and it was a four-to-six-month window, and there's no guarantee that we'd even get it. The police department, Public Works, both had orders canceled by the manufacturer. McGrath Auto Group, they bid, and they actually had three, three of the chassis on their lot. You'll notice from my memo that they were $2,500 more expensive than Bob Brown, but they have the chassis available for immediate delivery. So staff recommendation is, is that you approve, approve the bid from McGrath Auto and allow us to purchase it.
Any questions or comments up here? I don't anticipate any from the public, but if anybody wants to jump up and raise a hand, do so. Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Very good, that carried, as I understand, it may take a long time to get it up, put together and up here anyway, the way things are on supplies on big vehicles like that. Okay, next resolution is what?
Resolution 2024-005, accepting Iowa DOT offer of city bridge funding for the Center Street Viaduct Project, number STR 21002.
Those around comes around back to the city bridge.
Move to approve, your honor.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Heather Thomas, Public Works. About a year ago, we brought to you some information regarding the Center Street Viaduct Project, and at that time, we were short funds for the project, and the decision was to go ahead and apply for what's called city bridge funding. Recently, we were notified from Iowa DOT that we are being offered that funding. That is $1.5 million of federal funding to go towards that Phase 1 of the Center Street Viaduct Project. Most noticeable, noticeable on that project is probably going to be the improvements to the finger expansion joints in that area. There's also some understructure work, especially in the north vaulted abutment, and then also refurbishing the existing railings and getting those sandblasted and repainted. So with this funding, if the council accepts that this evening, we will have secured or designated about 4.1, $4,070,000 of funding towards it through road use tax, geo-bond funding, and this grant award. Right now, we put in a little bit of a contingency and inflation factor into our previous estimates and estimate about a $4.18 million project, so we're getting very, very close to having this fully funded. If my estimates on inflation and everything are correct, we're about $110,000 short. Options for funding that shortfall, which we don't need to decide tonight unless you want to, is that we can look at taking some of the interest from our geo-bond funding and allocating it towards this project. We could look at street improvement program or planned funds. We have several geo-bonds that we have money designated towards existing street infrastructure, and we could pull it out of that fund, otherwise cash on hand in the road use tax fund. So we do have some sources to fill that $110,000 gap, if that does come to fruition. But with that, I would open it up for questions and ask for your approval this evening on this offer of the $1.5 million.
Depending on that, council, have any questions? Any public member have any questions? Roll call.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Thank you, that carried. Next resolution.
Resolution 2024-006, approving a funding agreement for Surface Transportation Block Grant with Iowa DOT for STBG swap 4797628SG64, the Highland Acres Road Reconstruction Project, number STR 21001.
Floor is open for motion.
Motion approved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this one.
Heather Thomas, Public Works, this item comes before you to approve what is a funding agreement between the city of Marshalltown and the state of Iowa through the Department of Transportation. This item has come from, in front of council before, back in 2018, is when this first come through council to apply for these funds. All projects, especially when you're dealing with federal and state funds, have a long planning process, and so we are finally at the, the point where they're going to offer us this funding. Now, this funding is $3.9 million, a maximum amount, or 80% of the construction costs. And so right now, we have a $4.875 million estimated construction cost, so this would be that 80%. This is going to be the project from Lincoln Way up to Main Street on Highland Acres Road. This funding is, it's federal funds, but the DOT has come in and swapped state and federal funds, so we have to follow state guidelines as opposed to federal funds, which is beneficial to the city. With this agreement, we're signing and agreeing that the city agrees to obligate this project within three years. This is a federal fiscal year '24 project, so that would take us to federal fiscal year '26, which is September of 2026, having that obligated by, and then this letting would be through the Iowa DOT. This project would have a local match requirement for it, that 20% or, or anything above what's needed to fund the project. We've talked about how to do that internally, the street improvement program funds that we designate in our geo-bonding is, is absolutely a source, and I also included in our previous memo from December that we're in some discussions with the county as well on some cost share, because there's a portion of it that abuts county property as well. With that, I will open it up for questions and ask for approval of this funding agreement through DOT.
Any discussion up here?
I got a question. So could you elaborate more with the discussions with the county so far?
Yeah.
Was it a 50-50 cost share on the last one? I don't know, I don't remember what the percentages were, what were they?
Yeah, so they were based on what portion of the project abutted city land or county land along the route of the project. So the last project was from Lincoln Way South on Highland Acres Road. This project is from that point north to Main Street. When we look at the allocation, I want to say, the city owns property around 66%. Let me make sure my number. 64% is city-owned, and the remainder being the county. So if we follow the same type of agreement that we did previously, the county would be responsible for that local share of that percentage. These $3.9 million of STBG funds is a pot of money that both the city and the county are eligible to apply for. We have talked to Region 6, that if, if we do come to an agreement and arrangement with the county where they're responsible for a cost share portion of this project, that that 3.9 would come out of, quote, "the county's pocket," and not the city's allocation of these grant funds. But discussions are just preliminary at this point, we've met with the county engineer's office, and they seemed favorable to, to coming up with some type of agreement similar to the past project.
Anyone else up here? Any public questions or comments?
Jim Shaw, 522 North Second. I think this is a great deal, because if you do like I'm doing now, you can take some of street out to that other street and then out Highland Acres Road, avoiding all the speed cameras.
Any other public comment? Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
That carried as well. And we're on to discussion items, right? Number one, county, city council manual revision discussion. Who wants to take the lead on this one?
Well, I'll start off. In the memo, I identified three areas, these are things that either, some of you have noticed, I've noticed, the city clerks noticed, that have come up from time to time, so there's three things we, we pointed out that we might want a little direction on. The first one's on page 11, under the handbook, where I think at different places, it says mayor and city administrator, or, or city administrator, we just think it's probably best to, to be or, so that one or the other, in regards to who can consider requests for agenda items, is in particular for that. The next one is on page 13, and has to do with ordinances and waiving the first and second, just clearing up that language, or excuse me, waiving the second, third after the passage of the, the first, so clearing that up a little bit there. And then the third one was on page 18, under motion to reconsider, and this is probably where most of the discussion, if there's any significance, is, it's certainly, currently says to reconsider, you have to do within 10 days. Well, a meeting is, is 14 days, sometimes a little bit longer, and we want to be able to do it anywhere up to the next meeting, so a motion to reconsider be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting is, is our recommendation, so, so everybody has a chance to review that, hear, hear input, and bring it back.
Only Al and I were on the council back when we met every single Monday, and it made sense to have 10 days then when we had weekly meetings, so that's the real reason for that change, I think. Yeah, okay, sorry to interrupt.
No, and that's okay, and most of it, there were a couple other things in that same paragraph we pointed out, is just what's, what's a substantively different iteration is, is one thing, and is that something that concerns the council or not? It's usually a discussion among staff of, is this different enough? And that's, that's, makes us a little uncomfortable at times. Those are the, the only three things we wanted to point out, but you may have some others.
Okay, floor is open for discussion by the council first.
Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
I was giving some thought to allowing the mayor to vote on a three-to-three tie. I know so many things are time-sensitive, and if we don't have a council, once in a blue moon, if we would have a three-to-three tie or a two-to-two, allowing the mayor at that time. The mayor is elected by everyone in town, if that would make sense, and I'd be willing to hear other people's opinion of that.
I can admit, I thought it was odd, and there have been times where I really, really thought it would be good to have a vote, whether it's I who am acting as the mayor or, and I meant to thank you for handling the last two meetings in December for me while we were out in New York and California with our grandkids. But whenever I would raise that issue, Jessica Kinzer would tell me, "Other cities in Iowa have that arrangement, but it takes quite a different change in other things," and I never did investigate to see what those other things were.
You know, I think it may be in state code, under our form of government, that really sets forth what the mayor can and can't vote on in ties and sort of things. So we need to research that and see, but I think you might be right. The state code might prevent that.
And maybe, you know, it's probably time to take a look at that and see what the real difference is. It was a long time ago that we went to this form of governor, and we'd just gotten used to it. But I know other cities, even cities our size, do have a different form. I think Waterloo is one where they do have a vote. Well, I know the Waterloo system is still the old-fashioned one without a city administrator, as I understand it. But I think there are other cities where they do have the other form under the Iowa Code that allow the mayor to vote. Let's take a look at that. But anyone else up here have any input? Anybody out there? Okay, I think we've got our assignment. Although if staff would like to change the menu now, and then we find out that actually it wouldn't be that hard to make that vote change later, we could call, solicit a motion to approve the changes that you've suggested and amend them later.
Is there any concern on the substantive change? I mean, has anybody ever thought that something came back to you that wasn't enough, or should we have more definition on that, or are you okay letting staff decide if we should put it back on the agenda, staff or the mayor?
I know, Gary, once you raised the issue, was it a big enough change to come back? And at that time, their action was to see what our city attorney thought. As an attorney, I find it intriguing that anybody would ask an attorney, "Well, what's, how do you define substantial, or how do you define reasonable?" Because lawyers all disagree on that stuff anyway, and leave it up to a judge.
I guess I don't understand what Joe's question was, about bringing something back.
It says a substantive change, and that's what it says. What's a substantive change? Is it a word? Is it a section deleted, a section added, a sentence added? It's kind of interesting. We've had a couple of them that were like, "Is this enough?" That would be substantive change.
And I think in the context, we were talking about the garbage hauling stuff. Could we revisit it, take another vote, now that we have a reconstituted council, that sort of thing, or was it?
I think it was. I think the garbage ordinance might have been when some of this did come out. So our plan was to bring this back to you. If there weren't any changes, bring back the amendment for you to vote on it the next time. So I think that's still the plan. We'll reach out to the city attorney and see if he has any thoughts on either the voting or language changes.
Anybody else up here or out there? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Why don't you just take substantive out of it and let the council decide whether it should come back or not?
Anyone else from the public like to comment? Okay, we know what the staff will be doing on that one. And then for the most interesting topic we've had yet this year, the sewer revenue bond loan forgiveness discussion.
Heather Thomas, Public Works, and please bear with me on this one. So we have a $13.125 million revenue bond that is being used to pay back two construction projects we have underway right now. One out at the plant, that's our headworks and digester project, and another one that is in town, throughout town, with the CIPP, basically a lining project for our sanitary sewer. When we took on this loan, it's through the State Revolving Fund of Iowa DNR, and it's a lower interest loan. It's essentially a 1.75 interest rate, a 25% or .25% service fee, and a .25% initiation fee. So essentially, it's a 2% loan on money. With that, when we initially went through that process, and I believe it was back in 2021, we applied for what's called a sponsored project. And what that is, it's an initiative through the state where they take money and interest rates and allow us to work on water quality projects. So anytime that you have a clean water, SRF loan, which is wastewater, you are able to apply for a reduced interest rate beyond the 2% to essentially free up money to do non-point source or water quality projects. The city applied for that. We were awarded that project and those funds. So that's a $1.3 million essential grant that we can use for water quality projects. Right now, that's been designated towards the parking lot tee across the State Street right here, and also a half a block of a pedestrian alley. And those are going to be permeable paver projects, so similar to the parking lot that went in over on Church Street. So we have this pot of money that we can use, this $1.3 million. About a year ago, we heard that there was potential loan forgiveness out there for the SRF clean water loan, so the one for our wastewater and our sewer project. At that time, I believe it was December of 2022, we went ahead and applied for those funds as a loan forgiveness. At that time, there was no information included that talked about how that would interact with a sponsored project. At that time that we applied for it, it's competitive, time-sensitive, and then it looks at kind of disadvantaged communities and priority points as well. And Marshalltown was the first project that did not get awarded the funds on that list. So essentially, we were told at that time, if additional money became available, we would be first on the list to have access to those funds. We recently learned that the bipartisan infrastructure law, so bill funding, additional money was allocated towards this program. And now the max grant award was switched from $1 million to $2 million of loan forgiveness. However, they also did some looking and decided that if a community wanted to go ahead and do that loan forgiveness, that they would not be eligible to continue with a sponsored project. So that's the location that we find ourselves in today and the decision that we need to make. We essentially need to proceed with a potential loan forgiveness or turn down a loan forgiveness and proceed with a sponsored project. So we're kind of at that crossroads where we need to make that decision. We probably need to make that decision within the next month and provide that direction. In the memo packet that I've included, I've done a comparison. So what is $2 million of loan forgiveness? You have the option to take that loan forgiveness in two different ways. One would be an annual principal reduction. So every year of that 20-year life of the loan, they take a portion of the principal and apply it equally to all those loan payments after that final draw. Or you can continue as planned with what you were going to pay every year, and that really shortens the maturity of that loan. So that would take a loan payoff of June of '43, which is what we're currently projecting, and bring that forward to June of '41. Total, that would be a principal and interest savings of $2.75 million of less expenses that is paid for debt service coming out of the sewer revenue utility. So maybe I should stop there and ask if there's any questions as far as what two options are on the table as far as this loan and amending the loan. Again, we can continue with the sponsored project, which in essential is about a $1.3 million grant towards projects that are related to water quality, which we've designated the parking lot across the street and a half a block of pedestrian alley, or proceed with loan forgiveness, which essentially comes back to $2.75 million less of loan repayment out of the sewer revenue for that project.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Go for it.
Before we get to the options, when we talk about the loan forgiveness portion, it disqualifies us for a sponsored project for only this year or for the duration of this loan repayment?
Yeah, so the sponsored project is a program that the state has had, I'm going to guess somewhere around eight to 10 years that they've offered this program. This current year that we're in, they did not offer the sponsored project program, and they wanted to reevaluate. I don't believe final decisions have been made, although there was a potential last Friday, they were going to make some final decisions. I think they're discontinuing the sponsored project program moving forward and switching to a low-interest loan program specific for the water quality. And by low interest, there is even some talks that they would offer a $500,000 loan at 0% interest towards a water quality project. But the sponsored project, basically the grant money, by reducing interest rates on a loan that we would take out for the sewer fund for clean water projects, would go away.
So we don't have great understanding what the long-term implication of this is?
The long-term implication of doing this only affects this loan in itself, doesn't affect future projects. But the sponsored project money that we are awarded at this point for this project, that funding program is going away.
Thank you.
Heather, we still need to do something with that parking lot, though, right?
That's ultimately your guys' decision. I know one of the biggest complaints I get in that parking lot is lighting and how dark it is. But yes, I think there's absolutely opportunities, if the council so chooses, to continue doing work in that project. So a quick update of where our sponsored projects are at. Initially, we had really hoped that we would be able to work with the property owner at 104 North Center Street that owns a portion of that parking lot. We've had some discussions with them over the last year, and I think ultimately, at this point, they've decided they do not want to participate, whether it's providing the city an easement or doing stuff on their portion of the property. So with that delay in that communication, we did delay the design of that parking lot just because we wanted to make sure we were coordinated. The project is in a state right now where we have a concept up in front of you. That was the last concept I had received from them. We have had one meeting since we received this concept that takes away some of the islands and the trees and brings it down to what the minimum of our zoning cord requires. And then they have a concept for that pedestrian alley as well, south of East State Street. So we have two concepts. They've spent, they billed us just over $8,000 for this work so far. I think they probably have a few thousand dollars they haven't billed us at this point. The funding for those two projects, outside of the sponsored project money, is about $490,000 that the city has allocated towards those projects, and that was part of the 2022 geo bond.
So Heather, let me see. I want to follow up on Council Kel's questions. So they're saying we have to make an answer within a month, but we have to make that answer before we know if sponsored projects are going away for sure. So we have to make a decision that could cut our throat one way or enhance us the other way without knowing all the facts. Is that correct?
I think it's a known fact that the sponsored project funding is going away. Like I said, it wasn't offered this year, and it's not planned to be offered in future years. I think the unknown piece is what they may replace that program with. My last discussions with them, though it's not finalized, I believe it's in the governor's court right now to review and approve, like I said, was up to a half a million dollars of interest-free money towards a water quality project.
Do you have a deadline on, you said you probably have to make a decision in a month. Do you have a deadline on this? Or when will you have a deadline? What do you feel?
Yeah, so they have opened up the loan forgiveness to the public. Right now, we're number one on the list. Because it's a first-come, first-served loan forgiveness option, time is of the essence, and my hope would be that if we can't make a decision tonight, we definitely have a firm decision at the next meeting so that we're able to go ahead and let them know, and they can get that offer of funding to us at the following council meeting for approval. Otherwise, we could potentially miss out on that $2 million of loan forgiveness.
I was curious what the Finance Department and you have concluded is probably the best route to go, so we can just say thank you for your research and opinion, and let's go that way. But I should ask if anybody else up here wanted to comment first?
So I admittedly lean on the conservative side of fiscal responsibility and management. And so when you look straight at the numbers, whether it's tax, property tax payments in debt service, or utility payments, they're all coming from the same people. And so when you look right at the numbers, and just at the numbers alone, 1.3 versus 2.75, I would go with loan forgiveness.
Mr. Mayor, if I could chime in here, too.
Please do.
I think when we talk about the administration, finance, and public works, we're all on the same page with that, is the numbers make sense. Heather did mention that there's some city funds set aside for almost a half a million dollars towards the special project. I agree, if you tried to look out that window right now and find the parking lot across the street, you can't do it. It's too dark. But we could, I think if you choose the loan forgiveness, we would look at how to utilize that city money and bring maybe back a condensed plan to at least do some of the work and look at what the priorities are. I think making it safe is probably the biggest priority. This, I think, made it safe and more attractive. Maybe we can do one, maybe we can do a little bit of both. But we would want to look at still doing something, at least with the parking lot, and then revisit the alley in the future as well.
Well, I'll tell you, the permeable paving in the parking lot behind the Tremont really does work well. We're about to get hit with a big snowstorm tonight and tomorrow to see how that, to see if what I say is true or not. But if we do do it, I hope we go with permeable paving there and in any walkable alleys that we do from this point forward, because that really is the way to go. Any other comments? Otherwise, I guess I didn't call for the public. Public comment? Okay. Well, I'm sensing you'd like a direction from the staff, so I'd solicit a motion to approve going with your recommendation.
Your Honor, I'll be dead before 2043, so no one's going to regret or come after me after I make the wrong decision. So I will make the motion that we bring this back and take the loan forgiveness.
If we do have a motion tonight of that, I don't know that I, maybe I should ask you, if we have consensus of that tonight, I think I'd like the motion to include to go ahead and proceed notifying them, and then I'd bring back a formal offer.
Yeah, that's what the motion is, is for you to finish the research, bring it back to us to vote on. Does that make sense?
Or are we saying, give you the authority to execute the paperwork now?
I would ask that I would be given the authority to notify the sponsored project program that we are withdrawing our application and project, and notifying the Iowa Finance Authority that we are proceeding with loan forgiveness. That would initiate them to send us the offer of funding, which I would then bring back to you guys for formal approval.
And Your Honor, we'd have to do it as a resolution anyway, I'm assuming.
When do we decide the forgiveness method?
Yeah, so I believe we have the option to do that until we close the loan, which I believe is likely going to be June of 2025. Both Diane and I did discuss the two options for loan forgiveness, and I think we both are on the same page. Both Diane and I did discuss the two options for loan forgiveness, and I think we both are on the same page of early maturity.
Okay, if everybody understands the motion, I'd solicit a second.
A second.
Any other discussion? If not, let's call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Very good. Staff has direction. Thanks for doing the research on this and for all the good work you do every day around here, Heather. With that, we are adjourned at 6:19 PM. Thanks for coming.